You stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, roll call, please.
Councilor Augsberger?
Present.
Councilor Bronson?
Present.
Councilor Hagy?
Present.
Councilor Richards? Councilor Sanchez?
Here.
President Protam Thorstad?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present. Let the record show that we have six present and one absent. We're going to open up a work session and I'm going to pass it on to Cecily regarding our boards and committees.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman, Council. I apologize. I'm still recovering from last week, so I'll try to speak directly into the microphone. So we're just going to do a pretty brief overview of some general information about our cities, boards, and committees. I'm going to review each of those that do meet regularly, and then I'm going to be seeking some feedback from council on any changes they might like to see with the board and committee process, council interaction with the boards and committees, the roles of the liaisons and items like that. So I'm just going to jump into it, and you have copy in front of you. So typically, right now, we have seven active boards. We do have the addition of the Charter Review Committee that is more of an ad hoc. Committees are typically advisory or more than advisory. Here in Sweet Home, the only one that's more than advisory is the Planning Commission because they can actually make some final decisions. Every other board or committee is advisory, so they can only make recommendations to council, and council has final decision. Committees are important because they do offer the public the opportunity to participate more in the governance process. And city council does have the power to refer items to committees if they are, if we have a relevant committee. So to review the committees that we have in place, again, the only more than advisory that we have is the Planning Commission. It's been around for a long time. It is governed by Chapter 2.20. There, I'm not going to read all the slides, but basically it does have some residency requirements. So no more than two members can live outside of limits but within the school district boundaries. There are restrictions on the professions of those that can serve, not that you can't be in a profession, but no more than two can be in the same profession. It is a seven-member commission, and it should meet monthly if there's business, but it's not required if there's no business. And so basically, it oversees a lot of land use decisions. I think a common misconception about Planning Commission is that they can make decisions based on what they like or don't like or don't want to see in the committee. The reality is that is governed by our city codes and our comprehensive plan. So even if something is not particularly popular, they cannot say no just based on public opinion. And it's the same thing if those decisions would come to council. You are bound to approve things if they do fit into the comprehensive plan. There is an appeal process. I'm not going to go into that, but those decisions can be appealed. Park and Tree Committee. This has been around in a few various forms over the years. I think it was Park Board for a while, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so then they were consolidated at one point in 2017. Same thing with the residency requirements. Again, seven members with four-year terms. They are scheduled, or they're required to meet at least four times a year, but they do meet more frequently than that. And so their charge is laid out in their section of the city code. So things like conducting tree inventories, identifying appropriate tree species that can be planted in the city, making recommendations to city council regarding tree care and park care. They do serve as an advisory committee to the Planning Commission where relevant. They can also recommend recreation programming and capital projects to support our park system development. Library Board. So this is actually a state-required board. If we have a public library, you have to have a library board unless your charter or another law dictates otherwise. Currently, there are five people on that, again, four-year terms, supposed to meet monthly, which they pretty consistently do, and there are no residency requirements for that one. They can, they can serve with assisting in hiring a library director if the city manager asks them to. They do make recommendations for library rules and policies to the city council. They are also required to approve the annual budget before it goes to city council. And then any donations or property that the library acquires that they can recommend how to use either the land or the gift or whatever it is. And then there's also an annual reporting requirement to the state library. Public and Traffic Safety Committee. So this is another one that was in existence, and then my understanding is two city managers ago, it was decodified, and then it was recodified in 2023. This one has the same residency requirements as Planning Commission and Park and Tree, no more than two outside of city limits. Seven members with four-year terms, and by code, they shall meet at least four times a year. Lately, we have been more on that quarterly track with them. We have been canceling a lot of meetings due to lack of business. They only have three charges under the code, so one is to coordinate with the Oregon Transportation Safety Committee, which I don't believe they have done yet, so we'll work on that. They are to review all the requests to change traffic and parking with recommendations to city council, and then any public safety matters that council wants them to consider can be referred for discussion and recommendation. Community Health. This one was an ad hoc committee that got officially codified in 2024. There was a decision made not to impose the standard residency requirements on this committee because we wanted to make sure we had the ability to attract industry experts, because obviously healthcare, it's not until recent years with the work of the ad hoc committee that we've gotten more healthcare experts in the area. So that's why that was waived for this one. And again, seven members with four-year terms. By code, they only have to meet two times a year, but they really like to meet, so it's typically monthly. And again, by code, their charge is laid out, so they are currently finalizing the inventory of community health resources. They're supposed to make recommendations to council to improve health resources. They do receive a $1,000 line item in budget annually to support the community health fair. And they are required to provide some kind of support if council takes action to improve community health resources. And again, if city council has any items to refer to them, they have the power to do so. Budget Committee is another state requirement. It has to be all of you and then equal number of residents that have to live within city limits. There's, you cannot just be in the school district boundaries. They're appointed for three-year terms. Historically, the amount of meetings has varied, but I think typically it's been between one and three times. We are shooting for at least two this year. They review and approve the annual budget message, which is a state requirement, and obviously the budget document. They're also required to open public comment on the budget at at least one other meetings. And then Board of Appeals. This one has, again, been around for some time. It does have three industry experts with no term limits. And to my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever convened the Board of Appeals once, one time. And again, their requirements are related to their work training, so there are some professional requirements there. So currently, we only have three vacancies. We have one on Planning Commission and two on Budget Committee. We did advertise in the New Era for four weeks, and we didn't receive any applicants. So if you know anyone who is interested, please send them our way. And then some items for discussion that I'd like some feedback from council on. Just across the board, by code, it's Park and Tree, Community Health. They have the residency requirements with the two-person restriction. That is something that we can change in the code, so I would like council's feedback on that. Or if you think keeping the residency requirements is a good thing, or you want to firm up the residency requirements for community health. Also, obviously, some of the codified ones have different meeting frequencies. We can talk a little bit about what's been successful and what has not been successful in terms of the committee's functioning. I also really want to highlight that your roles as council liaisons are very important, and it actually gives all of you an important avenue to influence the policy discussion. I think historically, it's been a little bit more maybe just reporting back, but I would really like to work with council a little bit more this year to involve you more in the agenda-making process in collaboration with the chairs of the committees, because I think it gives you the power to shape some of the conversation in a way that you might want to see Sweet Home go. Again, some of the codes have quite a lot of responsibilities assigned to the committees, some like Public and Traffic Safety. There are not very many. I will say, it seems like those that have more and more specific duties and goals outlined seem to be more successful. There is more productive conversation, and there's more accomplished. I think we've seen that struggle with Public and Traffic Safety, just because they don't have a really clear direction on what they should be discussing. So I think that's led to some of the reasons that we've canceled meetings, because they have not been as productive, and we're not getting anything referred to the committee aside from the stop signs last year. So same thing with that, improving the referral process. I don't know if city council's interested in taking a more active role in your agendas to find policy items that you want to refer back to the committees for discussion, but that would be helpful in fostering those productive conversations and getting some more policy direction. We've also had, like I mentioned, the Community Health Committee was an ad hoc committee for a while. Ad hoc committees are usually convened, well, they are convened for a limited time and a limited purpose. Under Oregon state law, they are considered advisory, and therefore, if we do use an ad hoc committee, you do have to prescribe membership and quorum. We kind of ran into that with the Arts Committee, which is why we phased it out for now. But just know, if there are specific things that you want looked at in a limited duration or with a limited scope, that is an option to convene those committees. So that's all I have, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Madam Mayor, may I? So for your vacancies for the planning and the budget, are they in city limits or out of city limits? And are they job requirements for the planning one? Like, who's eligible to apply for that position?
So for the planning one, I don't believe we have two real estate professionals on right now, just the one. Okay, so right now, there are no restrictions on that. That one does need to live within city limits, and then all the Budget Committee members have to live within city limits.
Thank you.
I've received questions before regarding the Park and Tree Committee that sometimes the council makes decisions regarding parks and trees that doesn't go through the committee. So maybe you can explain the relationship there.
Well, I think that's why it's important to kind of look at our referral process, because the Park and Tree Committee does go through a lot of planning in terms of our parks. And I think, yes, sometimes we do run into that where that work is not considered or we're not looking back to those plans. So I think it is important that if we're making decisions related to Park and Tree, that we are taking a pause going forward so that we're not overriding the work of the committee or the recommendations. Yes, please.
One of the other things to keep in mind with the committees is we've had committees in the past, such as Park and Tree Committee and Arts Committee, that want to work on park amenities. However, they haven't talked to each other. So the Park and Tree Committee has worked with staff to have a design for a certain thing, but then the Arts Committee has had their own plan when in actuality, they would conflict with each other. And so that's another important thing, especially with the liaisons. That is very helpful to have the liaison actually talking to the committees and making sure that they're collaborating. Because if we have different committees that are working on the same project but completely opposite, then, you know, we're not utilizing our resources, you know, effectively. And so that is another thing I would like to kind of, that has happened quite a bit. And so it would just something to keep in mind, which is why it's great to have active liaisons with these committees and just kind of working with the teams itself, so.
Madam Mayor, can I? So can you remind me who's the liaisons to each one of these committees?
Yes, I can. Let me pull that up. Okay, so Community Health Committee is Councilor Bronson. Library Board is Councilor Augsberger. Park and Tree is Councilor Hagy. Public and Traffic Safety is both President Protam Thorstad and Councilor Richards. And that's it for those. We don't have a liaison to Planning Commission assigned.
And what's the reason for not having one, a liaison to the Planning Commission assigned?
I'm not sure, to be honest. I think it would not be inappropriate to assign one.
So I think typically in the city of Sweet Home, which is great to have your fresh input and eyes on this, is that Planning Commission has been told it's been off limits to city council as you then are aware of information. You'd have to, you've cruised yourself. You actually have, I'm sure Angela can speak to it further.
It could be a conflict of interest depending on if you're sitting in the meeting, because some of the Planning Commission decisions get routed, recommended to city council, which then has to make a decision. So it could, you could run into a situation where you wouldn't be able to vote on that, depending on what your extent is going through that process with Planning Commission. So it's always been kind of a...
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah, kind of thing.
Thank you for that.
So it's not that the Planning Commission doesn't want a liaison, it's just it could be a conflict if once a decision gets recommended to you all, you may not be able to vote on it at that point, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's a great explanation. Thank you. Are there any policies the councils would like to have addressed or any things that you guys think could fit within the committees? That you're like, I think that we need to look at this issue, and I think it could be addressed by Park and Tree, or it could be addressed by Traffic Safety.
Madam Mayor, Planning Commission, going back to that. So that's a problem if, I mean, you need some way of a voice, you know, of communication, better communication between Planning Commission and the council. You know, so how can we make that better?
Well, I think typically, obviously, the things that Kona City Council Planning Commission makes that recommendation, and that's always contained in the RCAs, but are you asking for more information behind?
Well, if, I mean, if the only reason we don't have someone on that is liaison because conflict interests where they would not be able to vote, which is a problem. But you're losing that communication that is so vital between the council and the Planning Commission. That's what I'm saying. How do you make that work back?
So...
We need all that we can get here.
Yes, so the city council meetings and the Planning Commission meetings are staggered. So the Planning Commission meetings are the first and third Thursdays of the month. City council are the second and fourth Tuesdays. So we post, just like city council, all of the meetings are posted, just like city councils are, all the minutes, all the agendas. So you can go out, as soon as our meeting is over, you can go out and watch it before, before you go and watch your meeting. And so I'm not saying that you shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a liaison. I'm just saying tread with caution. Planning Commission is just as communicated as everything else. The only thing that, everything that comes to Planning Commission has to be noticed out in the community. So any, so take it, for example, if we have a subdivision coming to Planning Commission, everyone within 300 feet of that land has to be noticed. It has to be noticed in the newspaper. It has to be. So there's a lot of information that goes out for every Planning Commission action. So if there's more communication than that that you need, then you can let us know. But there is a lot of communication that goes out for Planning Commission.
I'm saying, could a counselor physically attend that meeting? That's what it sounds like here, possible conflict of interest. If you, as a, as Councilor Bronson, was attending the meeting as a taxpaying citizen of Sweet Home, not as counselor.
You could, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with you attending as a citizen. You wouldn't be able to, I mean, we have a public hearing, we have a public comment period also, so it would be very similar. But unless you're a part of that application, you wouldn't be able to have any influence on Planning Commissioners.
There.
If I'm, if I may clarify a little bit here, I think a lot of it also depends on the type of business that the Planning Commission is doing. If you're talking about an individual application that, that has the potential to come before you, I would recommend that you not attend and voice your opinion because you're essentially, by doing so, you're essentially saying, I am biased in this matter. And when there's a land use decision before you, there's always that question of, do you have any personal bias in the matter? On the other side of things, the Planning Commission also does a large amount of work that is not tied to an individual application, but is more quasi-legislative and is talking about the actual code and our actual planning standards that we impose on development. And those matters, I think, in the past, there has been efforts to schedule workshops for the Planning Commission and the city council to both review a matter. And there's, it's encouraged to have that discussion to, to talk about what's best for the city. So when it comes to legislative matters, I think it's very appropriate for you to have joint sessions, for you to be actively sharing information. But it's mainly with those individual applications that you may run into trouble.
Let's go back to that language again. The key thing was attending and having a voice. Now, you're a council, you're attending, and you're not actively involved in voicing opinions. You're just being aware of what is there. I don't see where that would be a problem, but it'd be huge in gaining information, you know, for the council and as a council member.
I mean, in principle, to simply, to simply be in attendance at a meeting, I don't think that there's anything necessarily wrong with that. There is also a question, you know, if you're having a public hearing on a matter and it comes before you, there is that question of, have you had any ex parte information on this matter? And so the counselor would have to state, yes, I attended the, I attended the Planning Commission meeting on the matter and heard the information there that was presented. And, but, but that's the same as any, that any other citizen could do. I don't see a problem there.
But on the same note, if you turn around and viewed it, you're doing the same thing.
Yeah, exactly. I don't, I don't think there's a problem with being in attendance. What I'm saying is, is if you're actually stepping forward and making comments, that's when you run into a problem.
Not, if you're not participating, you're not making comment, but for someone's, someone who communicates visually and reads language, like myself, because of my hearing situation, it's very much beneficial to be in the room and see the conversation, the assets taken part, rather than try watching it on a video screen where you lose that. And that's why I'm trying to, you know, the fine point of that, because these are the type of meetings I would like to attend. These are crucial. I'm okay with keeping my mouth shut, not being part of the discussion, but I want to gain what is going on in the meeting, so.
And Blair, Mayor, if you don't mind, and you might be able to articulate this better. However, the other thing I would caution you on is, watch it on the video, come sit, but don't go back and discuss it with other counselor members, because that then could become a meeting, could become a rolling meeting. And so you also have to be very cautious of that.
Stand on that.
Yeah, I'm just bringing that up because that has also happened in the past where, you know, you can watch it, you can listen to the decision-making and the questions, and then it's gone back and there's been discussion with multiple. And that's also, you know, ex parte, you know, that also falls under that. And so I just, I caution, you know, I'm, I fully encourage, we will have some zone changes coming up, and so, you know.
You know, I saw the fight over the stop signs, you know, that whole process, how that, all that was going apart.
That doesn't go through Planning Commission, but.
I know, but what I'm saying by, if you're attending a meeting like that, you can see what's going on. And you get the gist of the situation. But to be a council member and a citizen of Sweet Home and be essentially penalized where you cannot physically see what's going on, I don't think that's a good way of communicating. Now, this is my point.
Sure.
But that's my reason behind it.
And I, and I think that you're, it's, it's fair to say, yes, you, you're certainly at liberty to attend any public meeting that you wish to attend, the same as any citizen of Sweet Home is permitted to. The, the main question is, are you voicing any opinion on the matter that's on the agenda? And so I would, I would just urge caution when it comes to staying as neutral and as objective as possible if you do choose to attend, so that there can't be any, any allegation of trying to influence proceeding or something like that.
And I think also that transparency, saying, I did attend, I do have ex parte information that might influence my decision. So I think having that full transparency as counselors is important for us.
And Madam Mayor, just to give you an example, so you can do stuff and have ex parte information. A lot of the Planning Commissioners, when they get their packets, they'll actually go out to the site and go take a look at the site. And so when we ask about ex parte, they'll say, yes, I went and visited the site. I took a look at it. So things like that are fully acceptable. So you just have to remember what those things are and what those definitions are, and try not to cross that. So that's, that's the only concern, and especially when a lot of their, their business comes to you for making a decision, a lot of their, what we call type four legislative decisions and type three actually come to the city council for final decisions. So that's the only reason I even have any sort of caution whatsoever. It would be nice to have more involvement, especially when it comes to the zone, when it comes to our changes, when it comes to that. But I definitely would encourage caution.
With, with that ex parte contact, the most important thing is for you to acknowledge that it happened, but especially if there has ever been any, any contact with anyone who's a party to the proceedings. That crucially needs to be stated, and, and the nature of that contact needs to be brought up.
And on the same token, if you were to view the video, then you must say, I have viewed the video.
Sure.
Okay, and that's why I'm saying that to be penalized for going to a meeting and sitting and listening is, you know, it's just not a very, well, it discriminates against common sense. So it's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilors, Cecily also asked about any clarification if you might have on modifying the roles and responsibilities of committees or improving a referral process, anything, any ideas on any of those topics? So you guys are fully aware of what your roles are and what your committees' roles are and what you can accomplish and the freedom you have to engage in conversation and policy ideas in your committees?
Well, I'm a little puzzled now. I serve on the Community Health Committee. Okay, how much limitation is there? You know, how much can I participate in this?
Oh, well, the Planning Commission is completely different than...
Right, but you're asking the question.
Right, right, right.
And I'm a little gun shy about this. So, I mean, and each committee's going to be a little different.
Like the mayor said, Planning Commission is treated differently because they have a different more-than-advisory role. For the, the other standard codified committees, I would highly encourage you to, to be very involved in the conversation, particularly some of the newer committees like Community Health and Public and Traffic Safety.
Well, that's what my style is, so. I'm just saying, I'm just, you know, I always say, if something comes out of a community health and there's a request for funding or something like that, well, then there's, there's a bias. So how is that to be handled?
In terms of funding requests?
Yeah.
Well, so...
Like Public Health, I mean, you've got, they're going, you know, into our Family Resource Center. Most of that money comes from outside, but there is some money, that's city money that's used, so.
So they can certainly make a recommendation to city council if they want to see something funded, but they, they do not have any power to try to allocate those funds. They can just identify.
But they can make a recommendation.
Sure.
But that's money. It's city money. It's being asked. I'm sitting on that advisory committee. So at what point does that come, become a conflict of interest? And I have to disqualify myself or report that, hey, I was at this meeting and...
So budgetary requests like that aren't subject to the same declarations as land use decisions. So you would not be required to make a declaration.
Okay, so I'm just asking a lot of questions, just to be sure, because some of this is a gray area. Thank you.
And to be clear on the conflict, just to, just to make sure we're clear. Conflicts of interest and matters like that have to do with personal bias. Are you personally benefiting or hindered by some action being taken? If you simply have an interest and enjoy parks and want the city to have more parks for the, the quality of life of citizens as you see it, there's no bias there. And so the person who's assigned to the Parks, Park and Tree Committee can participate as much as they want and can come back to the council and insist on a higher budget or whatever. That's perfectly within your role as a counselor, and, and you can insert whatever committee in place of Park and Tree in that matter. The only time that it becomes an issue is, are you insisting on, for example, park funding that's going to be on the park that's next to your house or in your neighborhood that's going to especially benefit your property values? Then that sounds like an issue of bias or possibly con... Then that sounds like an issue of bias or possibly conflict of interest. Or for, for that matter, if your business does business with FAC and you are part of the, the, the Community Health Committee and you want to get more funding in for homelessness or something, and you stand to benefit, that's clearly a conflict of interest and a personal bias, and that should be steered away from. But if it's some matter that you think is for the quality of life of our community, and you don't have a personal benefit from it, then there's not really a problem.
I hear all the time from people that they would like to see more community participation. And I just want to reiterate that committees is the best way to get community participation and find out what the community is really interested in. So if you have committees or ideas for committees, or ideas that committees can take on to evaluate, I think it'd be really helpful to hear about that, so that we can get those community members involved and participating in the processes.
Yeah, for example, Public and Traffic Safety, they were very involved in polling everyone on First Avenue when we were talking about the potential closure. Community Health, they've been going out into the community, seeking out all those health resources, just so we make sure we don't miss anything. It is totally appropriate to task them, task them with things to do in the community.
If we have ideas, do we bring them to staff? Do we talk to the chairman of the specific committee?
So I would recommend bringing them up at Council Business for the Good of the Order, because it's on the record for your council meeting. And then that's an appropriate time to do a referral to the committee, so we can get it on the next agenda.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
So I know it says in here, in your little slide for the Planning Commission, but can you just take a little brief moment to explain why it's a set aside committee versus the other advisory committees? Because it goes, it could go through Luba, it could go through Court, it's a land use issue.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so, well, it would only go through Luba if there is an appeal. But basically, again, there are certain actions that Planning Commission can take, where they, they have a lot of decision making authority, a lot more than any of the other committees. The advisory committees can only make recommendations, whereas Planning Commission can actually make some final decisions based on the nature of the decision.
And land use issues has different requirements. Okay, just, I'm not sure if everybody's fully aware of that, so that would be helpful.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I can. So most of Planning Commission is governed by the state, the rules for the state. So the DLCD, which is Department of State, or Department of Land Conservation District, that's where all of our goals, our Planning Commission goals come from. And a lot of the Chapter 17 Code, which is planning code, is our Chapter 17, if you ever go look at our code. So all of the rules, regulations are governed by the state. Yes, we have our own in our code, but that's where all of our land use actions come from, is from the state regulations. So ORS regulations as well as DLCD.
Any other questions with councillors? So, yeah.
Sorry. Has there been any, I know some of the committees, you have to live in city limits. Has there been any concern with that, like in the, in the past? Or has there been any requests for council to change that?
We've had people that request different things. So the Health Committee, they did request that, because they do end up with people that are doctors or, as Cecily said, professionals that live outside of city limits. There's often been people that would like to participate in committees that live outside of city limits. But as Cecily said, Budget Committee, when you are planning to spend taxpayers' dollars, it can only be people that live within the city limits that pay the taxes, that can then make those decisions for those taxpayers. So we've, we do have people that sometimes ask. That's why we have positions in these committees, where outside city limits, they're allowed to sit on, so.
And again, I think, I think that's a question for council to consider. You know, for example, with Community Health, it was because we wanted to make sure we had qualified professionals. You know, one of the challenges with, in my opinion, with Public and Traffic Safety is there are wonderful volunteers who are very invested in Public and Traffic Safety. But for example, we don't have any requirements for someone who's done traffic engineering, or someone who's worked in that industry. So sometimes you just, you may want to ask yourselves, do you even want to impose some moderate requirements? Just to make sure that you have truly informed voices sitting on those citizen committees. But again, that may mean you have to look outside of city limits sometimes. So that's totally up to council.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but maybe a statement for some of the new councillors on the committees that they have, that they're sitting on. Maybe go over what it entails that they will be doing on that committee, because some of them are, like the chamber, they're just sitting on the board, they're just a liaison. They just listen to what the chamber is doing, et cetera. And the other one I didn't see on here was the, the Admin and Finance Committee.
Yes, I didn't include that one, just because it's not a citizen committee. But yes, we do have the Administration, Finance and Property Committee. It's always staffed with three councillors. Right now, the mayor technically has the power, for example, to make all the board appointments directly. But we usually run applicants through that board and an interview panel process. And that, they will make a recommendation for full City Council consideration, just as a more transparent process.
And even that type of clarification? If, if the council would like to see more information regarding how that process goes, as far as committee appointments, that would be something that could be addressed by the Charter Review Committee, if council would so choose. That's why we're having this work session now. Any other questions, comments? And we can close this work session unless there's more staff information? No? Okay, we can close this meeting out at 6:06 PM.